Okay, it's after nine o'clock. We'll call me in order. Mr. Enter, is there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, one action item to add, that's seventeen A with the HR Director, the resignation of a senior appraiser, so we should address that today.
Okay. The reports from the commissioners. Mr. Chair, Minnesota Housing Partnership, Sioux Trails Corporate Meeting, Sioux Trails Contract Discussion, and then Emergency Management Discussion this morning. Okay.
Building Committee, Ditch Meetings, Public Health, and Highway Committee.
SCHA and Brown County Historical Society, Regular and Finance Committee.
Okay, I've got Building Committee, USAC Sustainability, Land and Luncheon Library Board, Ditch Fifty-Seven, Sioux Trails Corporate and County Committee, and Area Two, RCRCA. Highway Committee yesterday, Tony and we were both there. Okay, there's nothing else. That would be our agenda for today. All right, we've got the minutes of June fifth.
I'll move. I'll second.
Motion second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Sheriff report?
Just the monthly report for the May of two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Chair, those gun permits, they really come in steady. What, about how much time does that take as far as processing?
So sometimes it takes, on average, takes about an hour. So some are a little bit less, some are a little bit more. And then actually what we do is we'll take, because of the, they were talking permits to carry, there's some checks that go involved. And also sometimes you have to see some stuff that's maybe out of state. Maybe they had a crime in another state, maybe it was like assault on a family member, where you have to like contact them to see if that would actually fall under our statute. That would be a disqualifier. So you put some research in that and then contacting the county attorney just to make sure that everything's, so on average, it's about an hour. So based off the fees that they take in, we also actually take, we, when she, she codes her time card also, that she's, every permit that comes in, she will take her pay, an hour worth of pay out of that, the fees that come in. So therefore, we're actually using those fees for something.
And all the permits to carry go through the sheriff?
Correct.
The purchase can go through the city?
Purchases go through your, whichever jurisdiction you fall under, so.
Where they, where they reside?
Yep, correct.
So does Sleepy Eye, as far as if they want a permit to purchase, does Sleepy Eye cheat?
Correct. Compre would take care of theirs, State Department would take care of theirs, MOL takes care of theirs. So the permits to carry per state statute, they go through the sheriff's office.
Okay, thank you.
Now you gotta think, so what happens, obviously, you have the guideline you're following of some sort that want a permit to carry, they've got to meet certain criteria. And are there instances where somebody might have had or had been declined to permit to carry at one point, but maybe three, five years later would qualify it?
Yeah, there's sometimes there's a county attorney who also, we've had some where some people have had gun permits, permits to carry, and also now maybe they've had, where they've had an arrest, where now they'd be disqualified. And while it's pending, the sheriff will contact that individual and say, he would like them to turn in their, he needs them to turn in their gun permit, their permit to carry, and will do so. There are some where maybe they don't, you know, maybe it's, they're not eligible now. And sometimes, I mean, you can also speak for this, and sometimes maybe they might feel a little bit more clarification on some of their, what they've had. They might have to just kind of submit more clarification. So, Chuck, you want to add more to that also?
Yeah, there are instances where they're disqualified, and then later they'll either get their civil rights restored, their right to carry a firearm on a personal, but it's pretty specific on certain, you know, all felonies, you're disqualified. At certain points, your civil rights will be restored. But a lot of times, the only ones that are automatic are the right to vote and those sorts of things. The right to carry is not, that has to be a special, there's a special box the judge has to check that their right to carry concealed or carry a firearm is restored. But they always petition. And the nice thing is the sheriff always has, by statute, has that authority to say, even if they qualify statutorily, even if by the letter of the law they qualify, if they're a danger to themselves or others, or if the sheriff feels that they're a danger. But then they have a right to obviously appeal that decision.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, if you have a second or file.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, motion second. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Yeah.
June's not here. One, two. On your report, Andrew.
Sure.
I agree.
Mark.
Okay.
I have a few changes prepared again for approval. You have one clean out, and the rest are normal wash outs and intake washings and stuff.
I'm surprised you didn't have that.
I think everything here looks pretty much typical wear and tear. The age of the tile systems still continuing to be a bigger and bigger problem, or has that, that changed too much?
Age-wise, that's the word. It's kind of the same condition as we were all along. What I've seen, no, I think it's just that the influx of rain events that creates more of a pressure buildup. I think that still more damage, age per se.
Capacity is not able to get taken away.
Yeah.
Well, it finds weaknesses.
Yeah, yeah.
I, you'll be getting another call, because I had somebody talk to me about it yesterday.
I just had one man, someone come in yesterday with seven repairs and that stuff. Never ending right now.
Job security.
Yeah. You should set up your drive-through right now.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any other discussion?
Gone.
See none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Excellent. All right, Kelly, hi. Number three claims.
Good morning. We have claims in the amount of one hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-five cents.
Mr. Chair, and I'm not sure if you were part of the email, there was one adjustment made to a line item. The seven thousand thirty-five dollar state auditor payment got coded to the elections section. And Cindy mentioned in an email this morning, that's going to be changed to the public examiner's expense. So it's just a correction of the coding, it doesn't change our totals.
I didn't see anything in my bone.
Second. Okay, we have a motion second. Any other discussion? See none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Kelly. Steve, you're up. Morning.
Warren, how are you doing?
Good. Good.
Here for contractor GED again, for funding for next year. I did get Chuck's email on my amulet. She put last year's amulet on the first page. I emailed her to get my contract sent back over, so that all the numbers match.
So the contract will be corrected to, I think, forty-two ninety-five point forty-one, right?
Yeah.
She put in last year's amulet on the first page, but the worksheet is correct. So if the board approves it at the forty-two ninety-five, that signed contract will be adjusted before we get a signature from the chair.
Yes.
Everything else is the same, other than the.
Everything else should be the same. If it's used, yes. Should not exceed forty-two ninety-five forty-one for the year.
And on the background owner, that's the actual cost per year, each year, one of the years we've spent out of that amount of money.
That would be the max, yes. But I haven't, the last three years, I haven't come close to spending any of that.
What, what, what would you say is the reason for that? Are there, are they already, do they have a GED or a high school graduation?
It's either they don't have enough time to get it going, because I'm making, if they apply for GED, I think they sit in jail for at least thirty days. By the time they get a teacher set up and get over here, I'd like them to have them be here at least thirty days. Sometimes when I get them set up, then they're gone, and then the teacher comes over here for nothing.
Yeah.
It's just a couple things. There's just not as many asking for it. I don't know why.
Hopefully, it's because they don't need it, and they've gotten their.
That, and I'm also making them, holding them accountable. If they come to jail one time and they start this program, and they leave and don't follow through with it, I don't give them another chance. I think that's great. They need to make an initiative once they're out to follow through with this. It's available to them on the streets. That may be the reason, too.
I'll move it. Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any other discussion? See none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
I'll get your new contract from you, then we'll sign it at that. Okay.
All right. Thanks, Steve. Is Les out there? I don't know.
Nobody out here.
Let's look at, should we look at some correspondence?
Sure.
See one is a minutes from May twenty-second. See two is Haskett Library Report. They moved into a new building. It was from the library committee.
Yeah, I think they were talking about that before. I think they were in the basement of kind of a community building there.
Yes.
I'm not exactly sure where they moved.
Sure, but it's, it's a little smaller space, but I think they're already talking about fundraising and adding on or doing something else. C three.
I was kind of surprised to see they had flotation vests for, in the library.
For.
I guess it would enhance the, maybe the size or whatever it was.
Just for the.
Distribute.
They're, the existing space they had there, they, all of their library shelves were for them, because the space was served by several purposes. So when they had a meeting there or something, they would take them and all, put all library shelves and the books in kind of at one corner, so they had a bigger room. But I know it's, I don't get over Haskett a lot, but a couple of times I've been there for meetings also, was for, when we worked on the start of the road over there, we met with, I don't know, that building. So small towns find ways to make things work.
Okay, C three is a thank you from, great, Andre Peterson, for the thank you from Ann Backinson for the Robert Niemann Day we had in Brown County back on, in mail. C four. The CHA. Federal legislation update.
Yeah, maybe I'll just chime in here. This is in regards to SCHA and the sponsoring of bill to, for county-based purchasing. And, and I think it says in here, too, that Louis, Congressman Lewis is now, will be the chief author of the bill, and Nolan is the second signer, hence they have bipartisan support. And they're, they're still looking forward, going forward with that. Waltz had originally intended to do that, and then with his change over to governor, running for governor, he wanted to back off of that. And so that's when, when Louis stepped up, so.
Mr. Chair, Tom Henderson would probably be talking to you, Commissioner Winchell, about should there be a written response directive from his office and your Karen's regarding this.
That would be good to have, just so they know that we're supporting this and, and know that they're willing to, but we'd like them to do.
Okay, C five is a drainage water management demonstration at Lamberton on August sixteenth. Is that, okay, nine, it's just a warning.
Mr. Chair, it's a heads up on this session. The agenda and registration will follow on July. So if anyone's interested when that comes, we'll certainly copy that as an agenda item and register you if you want to attend.
Okay. All right, C six. Wheels tax. That's in regards to other county residents.
Right, and that comes from the Nikla County Commissioner in question. So Sue and staff, they understand it may be across the river. They look for those addresses. The whole key to wheelage tax is where the vehicle is kept by law. So they can either redirect the wheelage tax, or they can cancel it, depending upon where the vehicle is kept. So it comes back to communication and our staff asking those questions if there's some reason to believe they're outside of Brown County where the vehicle is kept.
They may catch that, but if they send it in or do it over the internet or something like that, that might not catch it.
I would expect if it'll come to Brown County, if there's no interaction, to correct it. Because the system with, as she knows, the three thousands are Nikla County, but it's, if it comes in for renewal, I'm not sure if the system corrects it automatically.
Well, so Nikla County has the same, they have wheelage tax there as well. So they're in there to the county. I'm sure they get to Sura County, and people would not go in and do the same, having the same problem over there that we have here. So probably even Zalta Long Run.
Okay, and then C seven is super grace index. That's up again, I'm assuming. Okay. Committee reports. Mr. Chair, I attended Minnesota Housing Partnership Conference in Willmar on June fifth and sixth. And just, just to summarize, we really focused a lot in, I felt it was a very good conference. And there was a lot of good instruction. You know, there's kind of a wide range of people as far as their subject matter expertise. But we really focused on TIF districts and, you know, just like sources of funding to achieve. You know, that's one of many options as far as increasing housing. And it kind of went over the history, the benefits and the challenges. And then our, our city's going to have, likely going to have a new one. It's going to actually be right over here, would fall within my, my district, the former middle school. In fact, there's a hearing on that on July seventeenth at City Hall at four thirty, approximately four thirty, as far as the TIF proposal. So I, other things that we want, we talked about other forms of incentives to develop, because you know, of course, they really want to work with the private partners to have, have interest in, in building houses and apartments. And then also, we focused on, they trained us on, you know, what other, like EDA's are doing within that region, because there's actually several counties that are part of that working group with us. And then updates with everybody's progress in various communities and, you know, trying to kind of learn from that, what's working for, for other communities. And then we had several practical exercises, primarily with how to prioritize the projects, you know, what, you know, early on, he almost kind of going through that formula as far as, I've done that a lot, like with risk assessments, but it's that same, same type of worksheet or that same process. You're looking at, you know, how feasible really is it? How much time do you devote to it? And, you know, then focusing as far as prioritizing. That would pretty much conclude my report on that, unless there's questions. Again, it was, I was very impressed. It was a very good conference. Questions on that? Is that what? Okay. All right, Les is here. Les tomorrow. Got number six, Les.
Morning, questions?
Morning.
Morning.
Our fifth judicial district drug court, or we call it treatment court now, has just going on a attorney leave, and they have asked us to cover just the Brown County part of that position. They've attached a contract, they're going to reimburse us for twenty, twenty dollars eighty-three cents per hour for a maximum of one hundred and twenty hours. We have a person that has done this role in the past, though there's not a lot of training. Seems to be workable. That's just our county this time and not the whole district, or not all three counties, and travel and windshield time and mileage. And so I would recommend approval of this particular contract.
Mr. Chair, Les and I communicated by email, and certainly there's a benefit from the budget, because we didn't budget any income, and we actually would get some income. This doesn't cover the cost of our agent salary or benefits or anything. But it would be some additional income, so I guess.
Probably the biggest, and what I, my response to Mr. Enter was that the person in this role is our drug court probation officer. So she has to attend the weekly meetings anyway, so she's actually going to get reimbursed to attend the meetings. So there is some compensation there. And at first Monday of every month, it's a two and a half hour meeting that she'll get reimbursed for. Now that she would have normally just had her normal salary for. So it kind of works out, I guess. And we need to, we need to help each other in the system anyway. And Nicholas taking care of Nikla County, and Lotan has got some assistance over there as well. Those twenty-four hundred dollars, or twenty-five hundred dollars total amount, just shy of twenty-five hundred.
Coordination between the three counties is, they'll be all right for the short term?
I get nervous about that, because the statistics are so important in drug treatment courts. They normally have one computer, they share, or all the data goes into that computer about incentives and what the judge orders and doesn't order. And hopefully, everybody's going to keep good notes. And hopefully, the, you know, Mary will do a very nice job in our county. I know she will. And I just hope everybody else does, too, because it just, when she comes back, it's going to probably be a mess to try and get it all put back together. And I don't know who gets the computer or not, but we'll find out.
I'll move the contractor. Second.
Okay, motion second on the contract. Any other discussion? See none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Continue on, sure.
Don't complain.
He said it so sincerely.
That's right.
Mr. Chair, on June twelfth, I attended, as many of us did, the Sioux Trails Corporate Meeting. And, you know, just to summarize, everything on the agenda was approved. That would include my report. Most of us were there, so I don't know if there's any questions. June eighteenth, we had a discussion regarding Sioux Trails contract for next year. And just, you know, kind of, we were there as long as the chair. I don't know if there's anything you want to elaborate, but just maybe what that's going to look like next year and what's going to be proposed.
I think just it was going to mirror some other counties in looking at that, and some potential cost savings there. But looking at mental health as a whole, and just talking about if there's other options or other needs out there, what we need to do to do that.
So dollar wise, are we looking at, you know, we think there is maybe some potential savings there, but it's kind of a known, depending upon how many services we contract.
Yeah. Yeah, so the current contract, I think you guys know about dollar amount. We're probably, probably looking at half of that, roughly. But I guess there's discussion about if we're not going to pay as much in that contract, you know, there's, can we use the other money for other, is there other needs out there that would help, help the county? And that's, that's was primarily more the discussion, I guess. So we know there'll be dollars saved on that Sioux Trails contract. So can we, can we utilize that money to help the county in some other areas, of course, mental health intakes and things like that, jail, and, you know, just. They, they, go ahead. They feel that there's some individuals that are kind of falling through the cracks, and they'd like to have more focus on that, and that's going to be linked to more staffing. You know, there's, there's individuals that, you know, it's voluntary if they want to have a caseworker or not. At that same time, you still can't twist their arm, but if you could, you know, work with those individuals, I believe the key is working with them early. And, you know, because when they're kind of off the path, and generally having someone work real closely with law enforcement, when I say someone, the individual be from human services, be supervised by Mr. Henderson ultimately. But if they can, someone with some expertise with, with mental illness and with treatment, if they can get, working with them very early, of course, there's really, as far as the quality, certainly improves as far as treatment and also the cost ultimately. And, you know, when they... And, you know, when they end up in Anoka, I mean, that's, it's very, very costly fast, so, and that's actually, there's been, we, during that discussion, we, we talked about that too, there's, there's been some improvements simply because, you know, staff is working diligently and, and they're really monitoring that close, and they're trying to get, get on that, go under print in Anoka as soon as possible. So there's been some cost savings with that.
Yeah, if you look at, you know, Annandale and Anoka, eighteen hundred dollars a day. If, if there's ways that we can prevent, prevent that person from even getting there in the first place would be ideal, but, you know, that's, that's number one, but number two, when they do get there, it almost has to be where somebody's calling them and following up and not just letting them take care of it, because they, they don't care what the cost is, they're gonna charge the county no matter what happens, and it'll take as long as they want, they don't care. They're not real efficient as far as getting them out of there on time, so if you can have more, better follow-up and seeing what the options are, once they get there, if we can get them out of there as quick as possible and, and find better options, I guess, that's, that's the other, could be the other benefit of this too, so.
They, they were giving an example of, there was an individual that was in either Anoka, one of those places, and the individual had, had the resources to pay, but they ultimately, they just, you know, they don't care up there, so they were just charging the county, and that's, you know, directly affecting the tax levy. And they, you know, and they, they, our staff identified that and said that this person's capable of, of paying. And, I mean, you know, things like that, that there's, there's huge cost savings, but you really, you know, I think from the county standpoint and talking with the staff and Mr. Henderson, is you, you've really gotta have individuals that are, are watching that, that ball closely, because, you know, up there, they're not. That's just the nature of the beast.
And, Mr. Chairman, following that discussion, we expect an RBA next week for the full board to consider two new positions in Human Services based on the discussion just shared, and that'll be outlined to see if the board wants to put that in the draft budget for consideration next year.
Well, that'd be good to look at and review. I believe what you're telling, what you're saying here is, is, you know, correct, and that, that, that we really maybe can do something about that and actually use that money to save money. I'm also a fan of saving money, and I just want it on hold, so obviously, whatever information we enter now, we're gonna follow up. And I agree that, but those high-cost facilities, yeah, they're not looking out for us, they're, they're, they're doing intake and that's all they care about, so.
So, I guess, yeah, I think with Sioux Trails, the, the mental health, that contract will be sent to all, all healthcare providers, or mental health care providers in the county and, and out of county, because we have clients that are going out of county too, so that's, that will be offered, whether they take advantage of it, I don't know, but in the end, it's, it's going to save us money, and we'll know exactly numbers, who's, who's utilizing this, whereas in the past, that hasn't quite been, been the case.
And with individuals that are dealing with mental health challenges, options are good, so this, this would provide, you know, many more options, so I, I think we're going in the right direction, and there's some cost savings involved with it. That would conclude my report unless there's questions, additional questions?
Okay, let's see, Robert, number seven.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, and number seven is to approve the planning and zoning office to purchase laser level equipment. The background, the planning and zoning office is looking to purchase laser level equipment to assist with office functions. One of the more reoccurring things we've been having now since we increased the setback on, on bluffs in the county is that we have more potential buildings encroaching upon that setback, so we are tasked with going out to try and determine where that bluff is, and we don't have the equipment to actually measure the slope and then tell them, hey, this is where the bluff is actually starting, so you have to be fifty feet from here or a hundred feet, depending on if it's considered an eroding bluff or not. And then the other, one of the other tasks we have is when we go out for every aspect of the septic systems, going in in the county, whether it's the soils evaluations or verifying that the system is indeed installed at the right level, whether it's in-ground or above-ground in a mound to, so that it meets the separation from the seasonal high water table. So I guess we're looking at purchasing, it's a Spectra, the model is AL300N, and that has a rechargeable battery pack, and it would include a case, laser, receiver, tripod, grade rod, and a battery pack with a charger. If we go back to the attachments, attachment number one and, or number one is a quote from Carroll Construction and Supply in New Ulm. And attachment two is from a webpage, contractor tools dot com, and the total quote from Carroll Construction Supplies, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. And quote number two from the webpage would be eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. There'd be, there'd be some benefits to shopping local too, just that if we have any, you know, any troubleshooting or anything along that lines, we would have people in town to work with us on that, or any issues with warranty or anything from, from Carroll Construction Supply as opposed to just purchasing online.
Are warranties the same under both contracts?
That I'm not entirely sure about. I would have to double check on those.
Five-year warranty on the, on the internet one?
What were you using presently? What do you have, just, nothing?
Yeah, that's kind of the best guess. With the septic systems, you know, we, we try to be out there then and try to, you know, just use like a ruler to measure to try and verify with the installer that it is going in at the right level, but it still is kind of a best guess.
How about using this equipment? Are we qualified to do that? Do we need to have training done? What?
Uh, is, they do, they do give you some training on the equipment as far as going through the septic system certification to be a licensed inspector, which John and I both are, you kind of run through setting an instrument height and then taking the elevations themselves and then figuring out, you know, the difference.
So you, you don't anticipate any extra training to the Willmore office?
You, you, Carroll can help you. Yeah, you, basically, you move the rod up or down, and it gives you different fees, whether you're above it, below it, or right on, and then you look at what the rod has feet and inches or feet and ten, and tenths of inches, or tenths of feet.
Is this something we would charge Feeb to do, or is this something that we should be doing as part of our...
Um, both, both the septic stuff and, you know, if we were going out measuring for a building permit, they both have fees attached already, so I don't know that we would add additional fee for doing this, because this will be part of the background in determining whether it meets the setback.
Units are identical, appears here, model numbers and whatnot?
Yep.
I think there's a lot of value in that, if we got a problem, whatever, be local, if we could do something there, I don't know, there isn't a whole lot of difference in I don't like to throw away money, but I think that that might be, if we don't do it local, we might be throwing away money if we end up with an issue. Eight hundred and twenty-four versus, what was the other total here?
Eight hundred and fifty-nine, ninety-seven.
Thirty-five dollars.
I mean, that's not even gonna cover postage to ship back or something.
Right. Was there freight to get, you know, was there any freight on the internet?
It says free shipping on there.
What, which, is this gonna be, what, how are we paying for this? Out of what fund? Is this county dollars or...
So we have performance grant money in the septic and Feeb lot program. We will be receiving an additional nine thousand nine hundred dollars in performance grant from Feeb lot, and we do have, I don't, John would know more the amount that we received last year and what we anticipate receiving this year for the septic program too. Because the other side of this is, we could use it for Feeb lots too with determining any open lot runoff issue, we would need to know the slope of the open lot too for, it's called a min farm, is the, the method upon determining if there is an issue.
And with this, for Chuck here would be the, we can choose the other, the higher bid here if we so determined to do that, stating why we're doing that, if that's...
Right, as long as you have a reason, stated a reason why, not with the lowest bid, if there's some, people you've articulated, it's the fact that for return, there'd be additional postage, additional freight. You know, certification to not accept the lowest bid.
Yes, I have one question yet, we haven't been using anything like this for ever, I guess maybe you might say. Have we run into problems that we would have been better off, I mean, if you're gonna do some, we're spending a thousand dollars, so do we have, and what if we, will we find problems or adjust things in your opinion?
Yeah, you know, in the last two years, because, two years ago when we updated the zoning ordinance, we increased that setback from thirty to fifty feet or a hundred feet, and we have, you know, with, with thirty feet, typically people want to stay away from that bluff area as it is with their building, so it's a little easier to kind of justify that saying, you know, conservatively, this is where the bluff is, and they're okay with that thirty feet, we're kind of getting challenged on that fifty feet a little bit now, so it'd be, be important to know exactly where the bluff starts and to get an accurate measurement.
And how often do we do that?
Um, we, I had probably about ten of them since the beginning of the year, and we got another one while I was gone, one for the past week, that they need a setback measurement on the block.
These are on new homes?
No, these are anything from garage to garden shed, anything like that.
Yeah, I gotta go, well, where I was at yesterday was show what river does and see if they were, how close they were to build, right?
Yeah, I would like to keep them back as far as they can, because we've seen things that happen when they don't, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna move the Carroll Construction bid because of the small difference in, in cost, the opportunity to have somebody to talk with locally, to bring it in front of and help set up and look at and do figure out whatever the problem might be, the fact that, that there is a problem, that we can take it right down the street and have him take care of it, come work with it, and repair it, whatever is worth the thirty-five or twenty dollars difference in this particular case.
I'll second that.
All right, the motion is second, any other discussion? Say no, we need to go, call, Mr. Hunter, you call the roll.
Commissioner Winchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bodden?
Yes.
Commissioner Berg?
Yes.
Commissioner Dorfert?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevenson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay? Thank you, Robert. Jamie?
Morning.
Morning.
First off, I'm gonna introduce to you Ashley Johnson, is our summer intern, and hopefully introduce herself. Yep, so I'm Ashley Johnson, I am from Sleepy Eye, and I'm the twenty-eighteenth summer intern for Brown County. So I was in Brown County when I was in 4H, and last summer I was in Redwood County as an intern. And so already this summer, I've done a lot of planning with day camps, and yesterday I was at camp at Camp Patterson, and I plan on going again today. And so it's been really busy, and so far it's been a lot of fun. Yeah, so very, very helpful to have another set of hands in the office during our busy summer seasons. But just a little bit of an update, as you guys have in front of you, just some basic statistics as for enrollment, I'm talking about our day camps that we've had, and we've done Springfield already, we have New Ulm next week, and then Comfort and Sleepy Eye a follow. Our youth leadership events, we had Yellow last, last week, we had one participant go to that, as she was talking Camp Patterson, we have ten participants there yesterday, today, and tomorrow. And then Camp Omega, we have four participants and two counselors going to that middle of July, and I'm also on that planning team for that with staff. So Camp's always a fun time for a lot of kids and us and staff as well. But kind of what I've been up to a lot lately has been a lot of professional development between my Learning League cohort, we did start that in September and finished that in April. We had our Youth in You, which is our big state conference in March, then we had Extension Staff Day in May, Kelly was able to go to that with me as well, and that was at the Arboretum, so that was really cool to be able to see some of that research going on there. Locally, I'm involved with our Sleepy Eye professionals, and I've been on a career panel with some of the high school students towards the end of the school year, and I've been helping with a little bit of the revitalized downtown discussions that they've been having, so that's been interesting to listen to that. But I just have a bunch of pictures there from my Learning League cohort team, our MAE, which is our professional development group for extension, and Kelly and I there as well. This spring, I did an edible science after-school program in Springfield, and we had twenty-three participants with that, and it was really fun seeing those kids excited to come learn every day, and, you know, food and science is always fun with kids, so we did popcorn, marshmallows, bubble gum, and then some mystery food tests. One of our big things with our gap given process that we went through this fall was doing community awareness, so you can see a long list there of trying to be more active within our communities, getting to some more community events. We will be at a private event in town on Thursday night, just getting the word out there more about what 4H is and showing people what we have to offer. We're doing a countywide, countywide recycling project, and I'm working with John Naisley here and the air board. The county fair, our recycling is not very good, and so we kind of were hoping to increase that and help promote that, and so our clubs are painting two drums, each of our day camps, we're gonna paint a drum, so just will draw a little more attention to them, and we're hoping to get different colored bags to make sure we have blue bags for recycling, black bags will be for trash, so working closely with John to get all that figured out. But Craft did donate all of those drums to us to use for this project, so it's well underway at this point, all the clubs are painted away, and be fun to see everything at the end.
And where are they gonna put these drums, at the fairgrounds or...
Yep, at the fairgrounds, and we're gonna try to keep most of them towards the livestock barns, 4H end as we would say, and then whatever ones that we use down there can then be transferred to the rest of the fairgrounds. Then working into our summer programming, as Ashley was saying, June here is really busy for that, our, we've had some livestock workshops with Sheep and Dairy. We had a UMR campus immersion at the Rochester University of Minnesota campus there, where we had three students attend that in May, our day camps, and we're also doing enrichment hour with the Sleepy Eye Public School, summer school program on Wednesdays. So that's a quick rundown of all of that, but I do also have a local program report that, we do one at the state level about every two years, and they decided that, you know what, maybe we should look more locally, and each of our counties are putting together a local county report, just emphasizing... just emphasizing six of the key areas that we feel 4H really helps build our youth to lead for a lifetime. And so, as you open up inside, you can see some of our program data there with our enrollment. Two hundred and thirty-eight youth and two hundred and six of those are enrolled in our eight community clubs. The other ones have been enrolled for after-school programs or summer programs. So, that number is definitely up from years past. Last year, there was a hundred and seventy-five youth at the state county fair. So, a high majority of our youth enrolled in the program do participate. So, we have youth in 4H make positive choices. As I was just telling you about that UMR campus immersion, we had three youth from the Hispanic community in Sleepy Eye participate in that, working with Mrs. Kuker, who's the Hispanic liaison at the school, to get them recruited to attend this. But Katie, our extension educator, who helped transport the kids back and forth, had that quote at the bottom there saying, Juan was one of the young gentlemen that attended, talked to his friend on the phone the whole way home, and he changed what he wanted to do and how to get there to do to the experience at UMR. And he says that, you know, may oppose their own immersion experience, and he wanted to bring his friend with to learn more about these opportunities available to youth interested in health sciences. So, it's pretty interesting. It's really fun to be able to see those impacts that these events have on those kids. But youth in 4H like learn to communicate effectively, and, you know, we try to really promote outside of the show ring for our livestock kids. And two ways that kids can do that is through project goal and livestock judging. And Crystal Porter there talked about her dairy judging, that she's been involved with for nine years, and how it's taught her confidence and to clearly and respectfully communicate her opinion. Youth in 4H build connections with peers, adults, and communities. Last year, we put out an article about the leasing program that we have that's very heavily used in Brown County. We had twenty-five youth that signed and filed those animal lease agreements last year, and those are between the 4H'er and an adult mentor.
So, when I sign a lease agreement, how much, what is my responsibility? Are they caring for this animal on a weekly basis or something?
Yeah, and that's where, and that's where they, you know, determine that between the 4H family and that mentor family. So, like my family, we lease to four girls to that show in Brown County, to the show in Cottonwood County. And we write down, you know, we said, say, we expect you to be here three times a week, and that helped to help, you know, train, feed, wash, because it's their project. We want that to be their project and not ours. Some people may put a price, some kind of cost to it. We, for our family, you know, we only charge a cost if we're having to transport the animals to a show. But it's just, it's giving them that experience to really learn. Because like Cassidy, her quote here, they've been able to experience many different species through the lease program just because they don't have the facilities to really hold those animals at their place. One great thing too is this year, I didn't talk about it here, was we had a family that did a doctor pig program where they had a couple of kids leased from them in the years past, and they want to provide that opportunity to somebody who's never had experience with swine. And so, we actually have three youth that are having the first time experience with swine because they opened their, their arms to that opportunity. So, it's just an agreement between the 4H'er and the mentor. And then our, you know, global community that we contribute to, all eight of our clubs always complete at least one community service project, many of them do more. For instance, the Milford 4H Club this year is doing nine in celebration of the ninetieth anniversary. And so, Christie talked about how those service projects give all of our club members a chance to make a positive contribution in as many areas as they choose. They are also more aware of the needs in our own communities. And then on the back page, the current adults empowering youth to learn and lead. And since two thousand sixteen when I started my position, our youth participation at our federation committee meetings has doubled. There were, used to really be no youth voice, and now there are youth there all the time, and it's more youth-driven than adult-driven, and that's how it's supposed to be. And so, it's fun being able to see that and the adults empowering those kids to do that. Where Dalton said, you know, he found it helpful to listen and to get into the conversations, and he's never felt embarrassed because those adults have been very encouraging to him. And then our future focus is that we believe more youth deserve access to 4H. Based off of kids' counts data, in Brown County, there are just over four thousand youth ages five through seventeen, which is the age range for 4H. So, there's a lot of kids obviously we still are able to reach based off of our two hundred and thirty-eight at this point. But we tried to do a lot of that by doing some community awareness and getting involved with partnerships between the education, working with our SNAP Ed program, summer schools, and school H care programs to provide more access to those youth. So, Roseanne said that their community education program in Springfield greatly values the partnership we have with our local 4H program. 4H program offers enrichment classes for our youth both after school and during the summer that enhances their learning through hands-on training. So, it's nice to be able to kind of take some time and actually look at some of the impact that our program is having here locally versus just on the state level. Any questions or comments to you guys?
It's a nice overview of what 4H does, and we continue to have a large impact on youth and even adults in their community through education and all that.
Thank you. Have a good rest of your day.
Motion to accept order filed.
Second. Motion second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll take a quick five-minute break and be back. All right, we'll reconvene in the meeting.
Good morning. First item we have before you is an application filed by Chad Mathwoods of Mathwoods Construction on the property in section twenty-seven of Leavenworth Township. This is for the purpose of rezoning approximately twenty acres of land to the south of County Road twenty-four from R1 Residential Zoning District and A1 Agricultural Protection Zoning District to I2 Industrial. First item we have for you, or the first attachment is the aerial photo showing the approximate location of the various zones that are out there. We have I2, which is the general industrial to the north of County Road twenty-four. And chunk on the northwest corner is of the property that's to be rezoned is already R1. And this is in the town site of Leavenworth by their shop and business. Attachment number two is aerial photo showing the proposed location of the rezoning area. This is all south of County Road twenty-four. The area that is the houses and stuff to the west of the property will remain rural residential. This is all south of the Cottonwood River. Attachment number three is a map showing the general area of the, or the, just showing the general area with a concentric ring of a half mile. We have three letters by various entities connected with the Mathwoods family. I'll agree that this property should be rezoned. And section seven is the mailing list that was used to notify the show ring property. We do have Chad Mathwoods here to answer any questions you may have concerning the application. They are proposing to construct a cold storage building, which means that'll just be a gravel floor, you know, heat, nothing like that.
Make sure everybody understands cold storage in this term means like a machine shed.
Machine shed, basically.
No.
We had no comment from any neighboring property owners, no phone calls.
So, zoning it to industrial I2 means, what does that mean as far as?
Well, they can, they can use the property for industrial uses. The storage shed, that that property was rural residential, and a large storage shed used for a business really doesn't fit in that, so. And they do park their equipment there in the winter. They have other uses. You can see south of the two houses that were, that are located in the area. You see these smaller little container sheds that they store various items that they use in their business.
So, their operation could move from the other side of the road crossed over to the same type of operation that they have on the other side of the road currently?
If they wanted to build a new office facility or a new shop or something like that, they can do that south of the road.
And I do have a, I didn't notice this when we were going through the county zoning last week. Right along twenty-four on what would be the north side of this area that's being rezoned, a little bit of green. Yeah. Is that intended to be zoned, right there, follow the county road?
Is it in here?
Well, no, it's actually, in mine, on the computer, it shows a little bit of green right, right underneath there. It's on the south side of twenty-four. It's, it's right, well, there, it's right along here. It's right up in here, it shows a little bit of green underneath that. Is that it? Supposed to be, it's not staying residential?
That never was.
Okay, well, and then this map, it shows a little green right up there.
That might be something you've experienced.
And it just didn't get colored in right, probably. Okay, I want to make sure of that, that we weren't...
You should update your cleaner now or your phone might be slowed down.
That, all of that area industrial part will be following along the curve of the road there. Would that be correct? I wanted to clarify, I didn't notice that we, no visitors noticed that either. We, this was presented at planning and zoning. No one commented. I think it was pretty much a consensus, this was a good thing to do, that it fit their use better than what, the way it was. So, allows them to expand their business into that area if they, if it continues to grow. I'll move to approve the changes.
I'll second it. I'll do a motion second. Any other discussion?
I, I'm not voting on this one. I have direct involvement with this project.
Any other discussion?
Locks in the area that is residential there, I guess, on the one side, but it's not like there's...
Both, both, I asked that question there, both of those pieces of property are within the Mathwoods family, so it's not like they're blocking somebody else's.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Any more extension? Okay.
Item number two is an application filed by Jed Luckin, known as Luckin Subdivision. This is on property owned by Alan Merkel, and this is in sections seventeen and sixteen of Home Township. This split is a multi-lot subdivision, A1 Ag Protection Zoning District. We have the Luckin attachments, number one being the aerial photo showing the area that is going to be rezoned. The attachment, number two is the aerial photo showing the approximate location of the two lots. Obviously, this is along County Road ten. The area is currently subdivided into many various woodlots. But this area is, has a area that is CRP land to the north. The lot number two will be an area that Mr. Luckin is planning on developing a house and building location. He has had it surveyed, so it is above the floodplain. We have the schematic diagram for Luckin number three showing the lots. And also, we have a, another schematic diagram of the same thing. And then we have the mailing list because this did require a public hearing, so.
We see no phone calls, opposition to this, or in support of this.
So, we've had erosion problems on County Ten there with the Minnesota river rate, and that works, they ordered back the pigs.
Yeah, that's...
Is this just north of that? Would it be north of that?
If I had to remember, understood correctly, that on lot one, that is a building site and it's almost at the bottom of the block.
Alan Merkel, that's it.
You can see that, that building site right up in here.
Correctly.
Yep. I didn't have any, I didn't see anybody having a concern with this. Odd shape, but you can't help it because that's the way, that's the way we're going to work with it. So, squareness isn't low, but I, it falls within all the rules and regulations that we have on the county, so I would suggest, and I'll move to approve that split.
I'll second it. Motion second. Any other discussion?
I'll support it, but I, I, it does concern me with that road. If we ever had to close that road or something, that all of a sudden somebody's building on the north side of that, that could, long drive road.
He, that person who's building that house, or who wants to build a house, that'll be a slab, house on slab grade, so it won't be a basement, so.
We already have a...
Right, there's already property.
Right there, so I mean, it's not gonna, I understand where you're coming from, but we already have one in the area up there, so it's likely as slow as it's not very good.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes.
The last item I have is an application by Brian O'Meyer, known as O'Meyer's Second Subdivision. This is in section fourteen of Seagull Township, and the subdivision is an existing plot of lots being split into two lots. We have the attachments. O'Meyer number one is the aerial photo showing the current parcel. This is right next to the Dog and Fox centers, County Park, and the DNR, public access to Clear Lake. We have the one hundred and seventieth Avenue, Lakeside, the roads to the east and to the south. Attachment two is the aerial photo that shows the approximate split of the two lots, and then it's followed by the two copies of the schematic diagram and the mailing list. This is another application that we received. No opposition or any questions about this from anybody in our office, so. Because this was a platted lot, it really, it needs to go through the process. Are, the proposed lots are largely intended for that.
Does the, does lot one, because it was agricultural, does that need to be reserved?
Within the shoreline zone, you do not have to wait five years.
How far, what's considered shoreline, how far out is that goal?
No, it's roughly about like this.
One thousand feet.
Thousand feet in short.
Yep. All right, any other discussion? I'll move. Second. Motion second, any other discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes?
Aye, thanks.
Okay, it's a town. Services is a town.
Item number ten?
Yes.
Just thought, I didn't know what CGW government stood for, but it is, has computer hardware company that sells computer hardware. Chuck knows. Apparently, we use them quite a bit. It's an online purchase.
It is, and I'm not sure if they have the state contract or information services. Uses it just as a comparison, one or the other, but we do get low quotes from them.
Yeah, when you look at the specific bills, there are a bunch of service probes bought mostly. Which allow us to go out in the field with computers, save our time. And better documentation is done when we, when we do our notes at the home or shortly after being with somebody in a car. So we're doing more and more of those.
Mr. Chair.
Regarding Greater Minnesota Family Services, it's in this connection. What, what is the status with that, is that still? Connection homes isn't supposed to be closed?
Oh, the connections homes?
Yes.
No, they've remained open.
There had been talk about it though, right?
Definitely, they were going to close June fifteenth, the last home, there's just one open now. And that was George, he thought, want to go since our last board meeting, I met with him. And talked about another alternative to keeping it open, going to a different source of funding and licensing through the state. Going to making it a rule five. And they're in a process of exploring that right now. Rule five has some better rules in terms of discipline, what you can and can't do in the home. And the rule five currently has less funding from a state and federal level, there's more funding from the county. The county has to pay with rule five's fifty percent of the services cost. So cost is bread and butter, we have to pay that no matter what, even when it was waiver home. But all the services with waiver home times were paid for by state and federal government under MA. Well, so he was going to close using that rule for two reasons. Oh, one was the lack of ability to deal with juveniles under the licensing rule that waivers have, the restrictions that it had. And the second reason was that a couple of years ago, the state took over fun, setting up the rates for waiver homes. And it dropped the salaries of everybody at connections about two dollars an hour. And he was struggling to keep staff before, and struggling more after, and they dropped the salaries. So rule five is an alternative, both for discipline issues and that it can pay better. If we can pay, we make up that two bucks, raise it back up two dollars. And see if we don't do better keeping the staff. So he's kept it open, kind of provisionally, with the process going forward to get it, it has to be relicensed now as a rule five instead of a waiver home under forty-five D. So he's working on that and working on, well, first it has to happen. And until we get the license, we're kind of no place. And that takes some time. So in the meantime, he's taking a loss on the home, to the degree that he doesn't keep it full. And even when it's full, there's some question that he should be making much money on it.
But he's functioning, I mean, it's still open as a waiver. It's just it's smaller than the model.
This week, so it's still open. But because it was kind of announced in the mailer, closing it out before we had our conversation that day, it's not full to my knowledge. But it's a great question, because I've been working, I'm kind of desperate to keep that open. Because the alternatives to having that open are shipping people back out in buck two and paying for the mileage and the social worker and higher rates. If we get this as a rule five, we'd get, we would get fifty percent on MA eligible kids. So county cost's still going to go up considerably from what it's been on your waiver. But there's just so much value on having it here locally, available to us for rules. And that's a whole other subject for another day, whether that fifty percent is going to keep going with this. It was in legislation this year that failed in the veto, so I'm not sure about that either.
And then I have one other question regarding the pro kinship, it shows on here two thousand two seventy-five. Can you just, is that a part of an allocation or?
That's part of an allocation, it comes through the collaborative, families first collaborative, and that's all. See, like, that's enough. It's just a month, okay? I thought we were on a quarterly or half-year payment, but that's a one-month payment to them. As they get to about twenty-five thousand a year, so that should be one twelve for them. Okay. Chuck, are you a mass mind, does it sound like about four twelve? It's in that vicinity.
In the vicinity.
That's what it's supposed to be, is a payment for me.
Okay, thank you. Can I give you another question? And I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Motion second, any other discussion?
One thing here, I see in a couple of different places, the soundbars, Dell marketing, you know what, what they would be? Assuming something to do with computer.
It is. How much is it?
Well, there's, this particular, there's six of them for a hundred and twenty-four dollars, then there's another three for seventy-four.
Just a speaker?
Yeah, assuming that's an attachment to the large.
Monitor for a screen. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion second, any other discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes? Okay, now we'll go into closed session, so.
So, item number twelve on the agenda was a request for the board to approve the appointment of Barry Schwartzrock as a full-time deputy sheriff. At twenty-nine point one seven four three dollars per hour. That's grade fifteen, step eleven. With the effect of July sixth, two thousand and eighteen. He's currently an investigator in the sheriff's department, so that'll leave this position vacant. So we're asking the board to authorize post the vacancy of a full-time investigator position in the sheriff's department, according to policy and contract.
Move it. I'll second it. Motion second, any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes?
This item is requesting the board to appoint Kerry Sillier as a part-time, Heartland Express bus driver. And that would be up to twenty-eight hours per week at sixteen point four seven three eight dollars per hour. That's grade eight, step three, which is related bus riding experience. His anticipated start date would be next Monday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. And that's contingent on a passage of pre-employment background checks and DOT physical and drug screen.
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, motion second, any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes?
This item is asking the board to accept the resignation of Marion Manders, the human services developmental health social worker. And that would be effective June twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. And also authorized to post the vacancy for a full-time developmental health social worker according to policy.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes?
This item is asking the board to consider the child support unit position descriptions and refer to PAC, the child support supervisor, child support officer, and support enforcement aide. Job descriptions that are attached to the IDC. And it has been eight years, at the time, in two thousand and eight, when they came up for, or a couple of years ago, when they came up for review, there were a lot of changes, I guess, from the state. And they wanted to hold off a little bit to have those finalized before they got there. So we would like to just bring them all for review and rotation.
Rotation may have passed this year. Any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes?
My last item is asking board to accept the resignation of Pauline Raleigh, as the assessor, department senior freezer. And her resignation would be effective in twenty-nine, two thousand and eighteen. And we're asking the board to authorize to post a vacancy for a full-time senior freezer according to policy.
Move it. Second. Okay, motion second. Any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes? Okay, I move on to six to.
Mr. Chairman, the note on the attachment, Commissioner Winchido had stated this would be coming. MBAC is looking for a two-year appointment to comply with the buy laws. And so Commissioner Winchido has been serving as the board's representative. And this would document for MBAC Commissioner Winchido's appointment through twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty, which would coincide with our annual appointment list. And we'll wait for an update request from MBAC in the future. So this is really an early review of a committee representation, and I'm assuming Commissioner Winchido that has worked out for serving on this committee?
Yeah, that's fine. Move it. Second. Motion second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes? Okay, going through correspondence, Mr. Booker, have you gone through yours?
I have one final one, Mr. Chair, is just today, June nineteenth, we had a big discussion about the residency management position. Just maybe some of the challenges that they're experiencing in, maybe just as far as some different practices and staffing regarding that position.
Yeah, I was there too, so, yeah, just looking at what the needs of the county are and where we need to go forward with that, so. Be more, go next.
Yeah, that would conclude my report unless there's questions or comments or anything. And that's all I have, any remarks?
Right. I had a building committee meeting, and Commissioner Simpson, you can chime in if I've missed anything. The first item we looked at was the LEC cameras and cables. Now, they've got cameras in there now, there's about thirty. And they need to add hallways and stairwells, and it'll end up being a hundred and thirty cameras, cameras unfinished. Viability is the main reason. Years back, they said we put cameras where we can't see, and where you can see, you don't worry about it, but that's changed now, they want cameras everywhere. And then the question was to, the cabling would, and the walls, cameras, and labor, this is an older estimate, a couple of years back, if I understood correctly. Was that a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, so you could expect it to be a little bit more than that, obviously, now. And then the question was, do we do it all at once, or a two-phase, a two-year cycle, budgeting in, that kind of thing, so. Miss anything on that? No. And second item, they brought up a jail door operating system. If they redo that, they'd be a hundred and twenty-six thousand, again, we'd have to budget that in. And the reasoning is the parts for the current system are hard to come by, and that was put in quite a while ago. It is served for, isn't it in the seventies?
Well, this would be the original system when the LEC was built in ninety.
Ninety-four, okay, so it had been a while. But parts are starting to be hard to come by, and it's served its purpose for quite a while already. And they were looking at possibly in two thousand and twenty, going after that one. The third item is a restroom on the third floor, and I know we had talked about that earlier too, and they're still getting information on it. So still getting ideas and prices. The fourth item is license bureau, they're anticipating a large flow of customers with real ID. And they were asking to redo their area, and so they could come up with six different slots for people to be serviced in, plus your photo area. Yeah, and we just looked at a couple of different outlays, they're, they're thinking of moving, they'd take out the wall and go into the first meeting room area. And use that area also. And the proposals range from a total new system, total new islands and stuff. And we were talking about other possibilities too, just to be economical. Like I said, expect that real ID to be.
How soon will they have to be kind of geared up to serve people for that?
Well, that's going to come in by the end of the year is what they're thinking, and it'll be, it'll be rolling already. So I'm sure that one's going to move to the front.
But is it wise to, because that's going to only be a short term, bunch of people coming in. I mean, I'm looking at, do we spend or modify to adjust for a short-term thing? Or do we look at the long-term process, and people will have to deal with the process of getting through that over the shorter term if that happened? I would, I would hope we could at least realistically look at what our needs are for five years on the road instead of for next year.
And that did come up.
Honestly, we think it's a longer-term thing. I don't feel that the state's going to, this process isn't going to get quicker as far as the application for the license. You know, the problem is, right now, they can, they can kind of handle four or five, three or four people at once. Right now, with this new system, they have to follow that person, they have to deal with just the one person, so the process isn't going to change anytime soon. That, that's my concern is.
Um, that, that's my concern, is spending a lot of money for something that could get better, I just don't see it getting, going back to what it was two years ago.
But also, if we go to, I heard six, the number of stations?
Right, they got three now.
Okay, what that also means to me is not only the cost of remodeling, it's the cost of staffing. It doesn't make sense to put six stations and only have four people work on them.
And that was mentioned too, it's, it'll be coming up.
But, I, I'd just ask, what I'm pointing out is, is plan for the future, not overdo the, you know, potential, I mean, uh, the state of Minnesota is, is difficult to deal with, obviously, and I realize that it's gonna be a challenge where they're going with that.
And our recovery of money here is not going to get any better.
That's another concern.
I mean, we, we can increase workstations without a big expense, I mean, we, we take away one meeting room, but still would leave one there, which is really all we need, I believe, so, you know, you, you can do that without a lot of expenses, you know, the sta, what's the staffing gonna cost, so?
We do have a follow-up building committee next Tuesday on this topic.
Okay.
I'm just trying to give you a feel, an idea of what, how I feel about it, and so when you go in and meet with it, you can have some projections as to what maybe the reaction will be going from this table.
There's some unknowns, uh, you have to understand that.
And again, the overview is, it's just gonna take longer with the way the state has it set up now, they used to be able to do the paperwork, lay it aside, I finish later, and they expect that not to happen, so, double the time per person coming in with the system that they got now is what they're kind of thinking.
We wanna keep customer service.
Yeah.
Good, you know, it's been great, I just don't know. There's gonna be some delays, and, you know, we're serving people outside the county because they like our office that much, but at what cost do we do that? Are we making money with those extra people?
If it's not bringing positive, yeah.
Anyway, we don't wanna subsidize next to the county anymore than we have already.
And then the, the house, uh, on, uh, center there next to the HSS building, um, they wanted to add a walkway and make, make easier access, um, and they were talking about removing the patio and redoing a, a patio lower, removing the deck and putting a patio down farther because a deck is actually tough to get at right now, because the only door access is halfway up the stairs on that landing, and out, or coming up on the lawn, so they're looking at possibly doing some, uh, landscaping there. Uh, we came up with another possibility for an entrance, and we're gonna be looking at that now, so, they're getting prices and ideas and what it would cost to do some of those things. Uh, we were all at the District Seven meeting, I went to the ditch meetings, um, in Springfield, and nothing out of the ordinary, uh, very straightforward, and again, the viewers, I think that those preliminary meetings save us a lot of hassle, so. Uh, Public Health meeting, uh, went over a question, it was posed in a survey, what is a healthy community, and basically the answer dealt with food, community involvement in healthcare, kind of as you had expected, expected to be. Uh, a new health aid starts this week, and approval of new home visit rate increases will be, be coming before this board on the twenty-sixth, and also the school health rate will go from forty-two dollars to forty-five dollars. Department of Health in a survey was asked about county cancer rates versus the state average. Uh, we are slightly harder, higher, excuse me, higher in the real numbers, but in, but statistically, it's insignificant, so we're not any better or worse. They held a bad water exercise on, or coming up on June twentieth, and, uh, that's basically if somebody taints the water somehow, what we would do and how we would respond countywide, so they'll be running an exercise on that. And then we had a presentation on brain development, um, just some interesting things, it starts at eighteen weeks, your brain is forming already, and develops all the way into adolescence, that's just not learning, that's the brain itself developing. Uh, and then he emphasized trying to limit screen time regardless of what you're doing, phone, iPads, or computers, et cetera, et cetera. But he did add, if you must watch educational programs, evidently that legates the screen problem, if you're watching PBS and a National Geographic program or something like that, so. And then, uh, yesterday, a highway committee, we met near, uh, Huffman Demol Pit, Alfred Pit, uh, to discuss rerouting of a township road. There was a short fix, it would have been just to move it over a little bit, the affected area, or long-term, take a more southerly route and redo that road, um, and the highway department, uh, could be tasked with the survey, and we'll be seeing that here to approve that or not. And basically, it's the Conwood River eating away and getting close to the road, and something's gonna have to be done.
They measured, they said it was within ten feet of the roadbed, I had one, one little curve there, and, um, I didn't look, but someone else said maybe a hundred feet down to the water, uh, and that's what the discussion was. Mindot has a pit there, we have a pit, we actually have a pit on both sides of that road, Hoffman Pit is where we spread the end of, and that would be part, part of that redoing, so, uh, what, what the discussion seemed to go toward is rerouting the road around to the south side of both of the gravel pits and that farm site that was on next to Highway Four. Uh, so the, what, uh, Wayne is going to be bringing is coming out RBA, uh, the next couple of weeks, that would, uh, we would authorize the county highway department to do preliminary survey and, and, uh, roadwork to figure out what the feasibility and what the cost is. That's, we border our gravel pit, most of it would be on our pit, and, and the highway's pit would be on the used portion of the pit, so we wouldn't be taking any quality gravel anymore, that, covering with the road, so we would, we would be, uh, it's preliminary, it's gonna take a little while, but it's, it's good foresight by the two townships that are, are called the meeting together to, to discuss it. We stood there yesterday by that pit, and the trucks going in and out were every five minutes or less.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, they're, they're working on, I think, thirteen, pulling, uh, asphalt up, and, uh, so it's a busy place, a lot of equipment runs in and out of there, um, if something would happen, and it ate away into that roadway quicker than, uh, and then within five years, it could be some difficult situations. So, some, also some concern on the near term of what they could do to protect the curve so that people could see that, because it is pretty close. And the township supervisors are gonna be talking to their landowners and giving a heads up of what's coming, so they're not gonna suddenly surprise, like the state official said, if all of a sudden there's surveyed people in your yard and you're wondering what's going on. Um, and also, you know, there's multiple things you can do, what, what do you make the curves, fifty mile an hour curves, thirty mile an hour curves, and are you gonna route that all, and include the pit where the trucks are coming out of, so the traffic runs well? It's a beginning stage, it's, it's gonna take more planning and, uh, more information to get to a finished product.
The big asset of moving itself too is that the, uh, where it junctions with Penn is much more visible, right now, we're at the bottom of a hill, they're coming from the south, with slow trucks coming out to the road.
Right on the south side of the bridge, too.
Yeah.
Right on top of the hill.
This would be, um, if you understand the area where Penn is there, where the farm place, as you go up, that last farm place, it'd be just to the south of that, so. And that owner, or one of the owners up there too, had asked that, uh, we were gonna put it closer to the farm place, but then he'd end up with a fifty-foot strip of land on the opposite side of the road, and that's all, so he was talking more about putting it on, um, the, the property line, and, you know, that's, that's all up in the area, but those are all the things that came up.
Mr. Chair, regarding, when you'd given your report, Mr. Berg, on with Bridge and Center, have, was there any discussion with panic alarms with Bridge and Center?
No.
During that discussion?
I didn't hear that.
Because I brought it up, um, before, I've talked with the Department of Ads, and I've talked with, um, maintenance about that. I believe that when they were switching the phones around, initially, they were, they, they felt there was a need for a panic alarm in there, they have them in Human Services and other parts of the building here, but they don't have an Bridge and Center, and I just think with the staffing, if there's a medical emergency or something like that, um, usually, whether it's full-time or part-time staff, they're working alone, and I think there's certainly a need there. They, they had thought with the new homes, they were, you know, that would be a logical time to put in the panic alarm, but to my understanding is, that particular building didn't get anything, the full number.
I haven't heard about it.
I, I, you know, I would like, you know, maybe the committee or, or someone to look into having something like that, I just, I think that that's, you know, logical and reasonable, just from a safety standpoint.
We talked to IT about that.
And then the other thing, uh, on Commissioner Berg's report, you had mentioned that you had been at the District Seven, um, meeting, and there was just a note, I wasn't at that meeting because I, I was at Minnesota Housing Partnership, but during that discussion, there had been, um, at least one or two commissioners had mentioned about South Central EMS and that there might be a request for funding for, for allocations.
There was, yeah.
That, I serve on that, that committee or that board, and I looked into it, I had missed the last meeting because I had another committee report or meeting that ran over, and I just physically couldn't make it to all, couldn't be in two places at one time. But I was aware of the agenda, and I had contacted our executive director, and he, he verified that it wasn't on the agenda, and it basically, they're, they're bleeding pretty bad. And it came up during a financial report, and then, you know, I, I think another commissioner had offered some discussion, and then they had just thought that the timing would be, be good as far as, you know, letting everybody know that this might be coming down the pipe.
Yeah, they did.
They don't have, to my understanding, when I contacted them, they had sent a letter, I asked them for, you know, something so that in June, we would be able to, you know, we, because we should have, have some type of letter, but I forwarded to you, Mr. Enter, and, and, you know, just to verify, I mean, there was nothing as far as an exact amount.
There's no formal request, uh, and so if you can follow up further, at this point, I'd suggest we just put, I think it was Fairbowl County that actually mentioned that five-thousand-dollar amount, I think we'll put that in the contingency item list, just as a placeholder, because it would be good to get more information from the coordinator there, is this going to be a formal request from the counties or not?
And, and, you know, just to kind of continue on that, we had, we had talked earlier on, you know, and I, when I've been giving my committee reports, they're really bleeding bad because the state funding used to rely very heavily on seatbelt money, and that's just simply down, and, and we got a letter to kind of verify that, when I had, had contacted them, and this was sent out to all the counties that are part of this, um, it just basically said that their funding's down significantly, and it keeps going down each year, they're trying to tap into possibly distracted driving, um, funding, you know, be the, something similar to seatbelts, but the issue with that is it hasn't been passed, and we just don't have the funding available. Literally, I've talked with the director and the, his employee, both of them have voluntarily passed on their insurance, just because the fund, and that, that's how, that's how significant it, it's gotten, and, and they have, we had brought up earlier that if, you know, we certainly wanna work with our legislators because we think it should be coming, it's a state statute, they, it should be coming from the state, but the money's not here, and we need to operate. So we had talked earlier about possibly, you know, it's kind of like the last resort, but that we probably need some type of county allocations, funding allocations, until we get this worked out with the, with the state. However, I, I just wanted to, to touch on that, that, um, we don't have anything formal yet, but I, I think we're probably gonna have to look into something, just because it's, I think they're a little bit behind, I mean, they, they, they should have maybe been working on this a couple of months ago.
Yeah, you said it wasn't on the agenda, they did bring it up and mention those very points.
So, thank you.
And that's all I got.
Okay, uh, South Country Health, June seventh, um... One, one little point that was brought forward that I thought we might wanna consider working in is, uh, a number of counties have the, uh, designate for the committee in the, um, alternate, in the off-cycle year election, so that in an election year, you wouldn't lose your main director and your alternate in the same year, uh, the possibility of that, so that you wouldn't, you'd have more continuity, be able to continue on. Just a thought, probably may want to discuss that, um, for future, uh, items. We talked about, uh, Hollins, Pearson, and, uh, there, Lewis and Nolan, brother, did that already, um, second round of visits, Leota will be approaching us here to come and, and do a second visit, uh, for the year. Um, we were looking at facilities, uh, we considered Walmart, the facility, empty facility in Olatana, um, basically, that got sold, and so that's off the table, and we've decided that we're gonna just extend our lease and go that route at this point, year by year. We had in the past voted to put a generator in, uh, they had a power outage, uh, about a year ago, um, rare, but happened, um, shut down our whole systems, and when the, when the power goes out like that and everything crashes at once, everything, to get everything back up and, and operating again is a major occurrence. Uh, lo and behold, we had another outage happen, uh, just recently, and, um, so they were looking at the possibility of either going with batteries, which were fifty-five-thousand dollars for a battery system to keep the server running, or about eighty-thousand dollars for a permanent generator that could operate that and more. The battery system was only set to last for five years, so, we voted again the second time now to get a generator installed in there, they're worried about if it continues to happen, uh, CMS could have problems with, uh, with the fact of, uh, dropping down, out of service there for short periods of time. The financial reports weren't favorable for the month, or for the quarter here, uh, through for the first four months, um, going at loss of, uh, three million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand compared to a budgeted loss of two million, three hundred and thirty-thousand, uh, so were unfavorable, uh, even to budget. They figure the, uh, anticipated decline of membership in January, that's a, the occurrence that happens every year, was steeper than anticipated, that's one of the reasons, uh, claims expense overall was seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, unfavorable to, uh, to, uh, budget. The, um, administrative expense ratio was down, it's down to eight point three percent, that is really good, um, they're holding administration down. The membership did come back up to the current level that, that had fallen off, it's, it's recovered. We're starting the, uh, period where the state withholds, uh, funds, uh, basically, they're, they loan themselves the money that should be getting paid to us until they decide to pay it, um, so that starts in May and June for the underage sixty-five market, and, of course, that's a, you know, PMAP and Minnesota Care, and, uh, those are big, uh, big accounts with big, uh, dollars, um, and then, uh, for seniors, in the month of June, they withhold. The total withhold by the time we get into July, when they actually do finally make their payment, is about fifty million dollars, so, big dollars that, uh, we've gotta prepare to be withheld until July. Yeah, we talked about, uh, the, the state programs, the underage sixty-five PMAPs and Minnesota Care, um, lost about four million dollars, the federal programs, which is the senior carability care, and those programs actually had a positive flow of about six-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, so, again, it got three, three point four. Cash on hand and, um, um, total liabilities and capital is decreased... Cash on hand and total liabilities and capital has decreased some, but still in, in good shape there, decent shape. They had, we, and I think we maybe talked about this just real briefly, about the Southern Prairie Community Care, which is a division of, I believe it's twelve counties in the southwestern section of Minnesota that currently provide services but no healthcare. And they need, they're at the point now where they want to join a county-based purchasing program or start their own. And had approached SCHA and Prime West for advice and for the possibility of joining the facilities or those, one of the two, or, or starting their own. And then we got word back that they didn't want to start their own for sure. And then now we just got word back that they have decided to pursue Prime West's county-based purchasing. Although we would have welcomed the challenge of trying to bring them on board. I think it's overall good. It just adds another twelve counties to the currently, we've got eleven, they've got thirteen, I think, and one or so, got a twenty, thirty, thirty counties. So just adds another twelve to the, to the mix. That would give us more strength to bargain with when we get into those positions that we need to do that. They thanked us, they thought we had some great ideas, great coverage. Actually, the committee that formed to, to look at this said that they came away with good ideas from Southern Prairie itself. How we might expand with a diabetes educator in the community and, and different things that could affect and reduce insurance costs and, and county cost. So that was, that was good in battle, but we're glad to see that they're moving forward with that. And we will now concentrate on other efforts. I think that's pretty much everything from South Country. Anybody have any questions there? All right, then on Brown County Historical Society. One thing I was wondering if we could put, they're, they're looking at a marker for Dotson, the community Dotson. They are filing for some grants to the, to, I think it was about three thousand dollars totals what they would need from the Pico Foundation grant. They're asking for a marker there. And was wondering if we could put that on their road part tour, that we would go through Dotson and just get an idea of what's still there and I guess there's a, or jail, maybe? Did somebody say there was a jail there or?
There's very little, there might be one building as far as I can remember. It's about one mile off the, of County Five, no, yeah, Five, I think it is. I don't know if you know where Kenny Lane.
I don't, but.
It's south of.
I, I know we've been kind of halfway past or in that area.
There's not much left there. I, it's kind of, maybe there's a couple of buildings, but it's really hard to exactly tell what it is. Everything's been abandoned for quite a number of years. Dotson actually, when I was younger, had somebody living, living in it.
That was that Russell, Christine Russell, because they had City of Birth and, yeah.
If you, if you don't know what you're looking for, you won't find it.
It was, and, because then we got already on.
All right, so then they are talking about doing some first floor exhibit, kind of a a permanent exhibit on, in the first floor of the museum. And changing the second floor to kind of a three-month rotation or change out all the time. Looking for, they've got a, they've got a grant partial to get a start with Marlene Del Meyer request. And they got a twenty-five thousand there and they've asked for twenty-five thousand from the Newham Foundation and the Schmidt Foundation. So the total cost would be a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand total. So they're working on that, trying to get, get that together. They did, they, people who mowed the cemetery at Searls, I don't know exactly what the name of that cemetery, if it is named. But the person who mowed that is backed out of the, will not do next year. So they're looking for somebody to mow that cemetery. They had received about fifteen hundred and seventy-five dollars passed through from us to the Historical Society who then took care of, gave somebody.
That's the one right, right by the Little Cottonwood River, isn't it?
I, I'm not positive of the location, it's by Searls, they said, and that.
Right north of Searls then.
Yeah, I think so.
It's very small and it's, it's ancient.
Yep. So if somebody knows of someone who would, would be interested in doing that, they're looking to find someone to do that. Our door, update on the doors. They got the popcorn wagon out that was stuck inside with the door collapse and they finally got that pushed back together enough to get the popcorn wagon out. So that's all in about and I'll post one of these in the hallway. It's got the popcorn wagon scheduled in case somebody wants popcorn. But they're rebuilding those. Donnie Hopmeister, I believe, was working with the county staff to get those operational and back to the historic design that, that they have to stay with there. So that's in, in progress. And that got, that, that got busted, that really heavy wet snow when we moved. That heavy wet snow had pushed up against them and they were pretty rotten, we get that probably. So that didn't help better. One Room Schoolhouse is open, will be on June nineteenth and the twenty-first from nine AM till one-thirty PM at the Brown County Fairgrounds. Sign up and have your kids attend and learn what it was like for a pioneer child.
I'm not going to do that because my grandkids would say, "Do you go there, grandpa?"
Let's see here. Talked about the endowment that they have and they get about nineteen thousand dollars operating income off of that per year. That helps them finance their operations. I think that's about it.
Okay, I've got USAC Sustainability Committee met weeks ago. Went over the budget. We shaved the budget down to bare bones. So just in preparation for presenting to stakeholders, the county and businesses and cities as far as asking for money, their revenue stream ends next year. So I guess just getting prepared for that. What, what needs to be presented, she's got a PowerPoint presentation put together for those presentations. And then just looking at what groups she wants to meet with and to present the story of USAC and potential donors. So that's pretty much all we talked about there. Land in a group we met that would be, somebody from the county, Mr. Enter and I. The public school, Newham Public School, District Eighty-Eight, and then the City of Newham. Informal luncheon, the one thing that I thought was interesting, District Eighty-Eight talked about some of the courses that, that they're trying to bring back. Plumbing and industrial arts, construction trades, things like that. That was, you know, a big focus thirty years ago. And some of that funding went away or it wasn't a focus of schools, they dropped it. You know, we talked about the Springfield, Sleepy Eye had a collaboration years ago and, you know, and now, you know, District Eighty-Eight is trying to bring more focus on that and bring it back. So that was kind of interesting, what, what, what the community needs are and trying to educate students better. So that was it for that. Library Board, filled in for Mr. Potter, we got Sleepy Eye. Between the five libraries, I believe they got their funding from Travers T-Sue, it amounts to about seventy-seven hundred dollars for each library that's split evenly. They are saying that Travers T-Sue is upping their fee five percent for next year. Discussion is made in regards to what they're going to ask the county for funding. I believe it's going to need increase. So there's some discussion on that. Comfrey, each one talked a little bit about what they're doing. Comfrey has some reading programs, Springfield has a book club, they started one. And men are even included on that. There is a lot of book clubs that include men, I guess. Anyway, they got participation in that. They have a large summer reading program for kids, around seventy-four kids. They're getting new city managers, so we'll see on that. Sleepy Eye has a summer reading program also. They have an area in the library that they're purchasing some things for the kids area. Some electronic things that they're, that they're introducing there. So Newham has a summer reading program also, book groups. They're doing some exterior landscaping, getting new carpeting inside the building. Haskas, we talked about earlier, moved to a new location on Broadway. It's a smaller building, but they're already talking about donations for the additions. I think that's all for that. Next, to the ditch, meeting, Ditch, County Ditch Eighty-Seven. Lots of questions, but went well, answered a lot of questions. So that will get redetermined this year. That's it for that. Sue Trails, we talked about. Public meeting and County Committee meetings, we covered most of that. Brown SW UCD met on June twelfth. Pheasants Forever has a new employee that they share with the county. His name's Ethan. Can't pronounce his last name, but anyway, this young man. They did mention they're doing some work in Stately Township on the Reek Slu. That, that's the one that Dennis Youngberg came in and talked about. In regards to drainage and they're, they are doing some digging in the road ditch to improve water flow. So they are trying to correct that. Some buffer cost shares were done in Eden Township in regards to planting. They did that this spring, so we'll see how that looks as the summer goes. And there's a little bit, little bit of discussion on dam insurance court. We talked about that with, at the Area Two RCRCA meeting, which I'll talk about next. So the other, the other thing was Springfield Wellhead Protection Plan. There's a meeting, I believe, coming up in regards to that. That's a safe thing to do with other communities. Except for that.
Sleepy Eye did that pastor.
Yeah, so I think, I don't know, is there Haskas or some, there's one more left. Pretty much standard, I think they're going to do the same process. Area Two RCRCA met. We talked about cost share, couple of cost shares in Line County. We approved a budget for two thousand and nineteen, a two percent increase COLA and a one percent merit increase that was approved. Some canoe trips that were happening the week of June eighteen. And I'm not sure if they actually happened during that high water.
I doubt they do because they've canceled, people were doing that in the past.
That might be delayed. They approved, there's a legislative gathering they're going to do on November first that was discussed. The main thing was, was a dam insurance. Obviously, Brown County has the largest dam. Some other counties are impacted with that too. The, who they had had insurance with before wanted all of it or none, so.
It was Western Neutral, yes, and then we switched to MCIT about three years ago, Chuck?
Couple of years ago.
And then the letter, what you're talking about there, I, I got the information. They asked for an opinion by Ricky Noonan about how the insurance, whether we should carry insurance or not. I, did you get a copy of that, Chuck?
Actually, Commissioner Antony from Lakeview, our Yellow Medicine County, I think was at the meeting. And he also serves on the MCIT board. And he forwarded from Kerry Netsky the actual insurance policy that the League of Minnesota Cities carries, which has some flood insurance. The MCIT staff are actually looking at that to see what that coverage is. And the Governance Committee of MCIT is going to be looking at that next month.
The copy of the letter from Ricky Noonan, I, I was going to, maybe could do it the last week. If you have a copy, could you send that out so that, put it in, just an informational item?
Sure.
It, it is interesting because it does, my reading of that letter gave some indication. Maybe we need to at least be aware of what our responsibilities are with our dam. And, and not that we need to do anything necessarily, at least we have, we understand what the responsibilities according to them.
It was an interesting letter. We'll have it as correspondence.
Yes, take it into context of, it's an opinion.
Yeah, so they're, they're talking to MCIT, you know, the League of Minnesota Cities, they carry that. So how, how we would get into that, you know, that's discussion, I guess. So they're, they're looking at that. To go back to the old carrier, I think she had gotten a quote. It's, I think it's a thousand dollars more than what the last, what we paid the last time.
That was for everything.
Yeah, so that continues to increase too, so. But so there's that, that options there. So yeah, we just, you know, we, they're, they're going to continue to look at it and hopefully by the end of the year have something figured out with that. They did say the DNR does do inspections every eight years on dams.
I thought they said five, maybe ten.
There's, anyway, so there's, I don't know how in-depth that is or what, they weren't sure what that process is, but.
That was a concern we had is with Area Two being, we may have to change it to something other than an inspection because inspection indicates some liability. We were thinking that if redoing inspection of the dam, we're telling you the dam is safe if you correct these problems. And thinking more along lines of doing is just a thing to, to make the dam, to, to maintain your dam. So it's not an inspection, we don't know whether that holds water or that would be something we would have to talk to attorney with.
Kerry was going to look at other outfits that do inspections. You know, other engineering companies that do that. So she was, she was going to check that out because I guess that was the question that I had is that, why does Area Two do that? You know, why, you know, does the county, does each county do their own or have hired an engineering firm to do that? Because what he said, I mean, if, if they're doing the inspection, something bad happens. You know, that's, that's why we have to carry this liability. So if they just, if they don't do it, then that, that issue, I don't know if it goes away, but it, so.
It's reduced, but it won't go away because Area Two is involved in the development, financing and all, a lot of ways involved in the dam, particularly with the development. We sometimes have an engineer that does some of the work on it. So I mean, I don't think we get out of the liability, we get out of part of it, but not totally.
So, you know, just looking at what the options are and so.
We've been doing that for quite a while. It's been a slow process and a lot of education involved.
So it's, yeah, they'll continue to look at that. I think that's all I got. That's it.
The only thing I had was when I talked about the road there, but I do have one thing else I, I found out from Springfield Committee. It was announced by Mayo Systems in Springfield on, I believe, Friday that the Springfield Hospital will be closing.
When, when does that, what's?
I don't know the dates, not the clinic part of it, but the hospital. The reason for that, what I understood was that one of the doctors, there was two doctors left in Springfield. One of those doctors has taken a different position, will be leaving and you can't operate the hospital without two physicians. I think that, and it did, it's been a money-losing thing, so, no surgeon there, so you don't have a lot of, other than people who come in respiratory or, or, you know, no surgery recovery that happens there, so it's been an ongoing, it's always something we've wondered about. But then there's also, I heard the story, they said, "Well, we could sell the hospital too." At the current time, that's what, probably, is going to be closing that part of it. I don't know where, I didn't get all of the details, so we'll see what happens, but it'll be an ongoing process. And every time we do lose one of those things in our county, it's a little less services to people who live here.
Who owns a hospital currently?
They don't.
They don't.
So, they've got, they, I understand they still intend to operate the clinic part of it, but not hospital. So, they've, there's been some ongoing, sort of some, looking at ways to utilize the hospital facility part of the building and for other things that that gets to be a sure reality.
We do have the extension that we met on the sixth.
Oh, yes, I was thinking about that.
Can I just discuss that a little bit?
We kind of, pretty much Jamie covered most of what we dealt with that day. We did Farm Family of the Year, we talked about a little bit, and that will be announced at Farm Fest, whatever it is, the Thursday, the first, no, it's the same Thursday as the County Fair goes on. And so, that's, that's a Springfield family, Paul and Cleveland Michael family are the Farm Family from this year. Other than that, we had budget information, I don't know whether they have forwarded that stuff to you yet, Chuck?
Actually, yes, Luanne has.
So, the budget proposal for Extension Committee is already in and we've got that part done for next year. I believe we had a three-year contract coming with that, is that, I remember it?
This would be the start of a new three-year contract, it's a board approved three years ago, we'll have that as part of the budget discussion and then at some point the board will consider that.
They have to adopt that budget contract, is there anything else, Steve?
That's it. Yeah. Okay. No more community reports, we got it all coded. Ways to go into calendaring will be next. So, let's see, today is the nineteenth. The rest of today. Sioux Trails at six.
Right after this meeting, I have Building Committee, and then at one o'clock, I got a meeting with Keystone, Saydell Keystone.
Open.
Building Committee, after this, Salary Consultant at one o'clock, Kishir Berg, and then Sioux Trails at one sixteen.
I'm open the rest of the day.
Okay, the twentieth. I have Minnesota Housing Subcommittee Advertising Meeting at seven in New Ulm here.
Open.
Open, open. Twenty-first. Open.
Open.
Eight-thirty Labor Management Safety Committee Meeting.
Open. Open.
Twenty-second.
Commissioner Michigano, that will be meeting here to start with.
I have a Brown County Evaluation Center Personnel Committee meeting in New Ulm here.
Open.
What?
I'm sorry, eight-thirty.
And there is that Corrections Advisory Council, so at eleven-thirty, I believe you serve on Probations Corrections Council. Did you get that notice?
Yeah.
Pizza Ranch?
Pizza Ranch at eleven-thirty.
I have it marked down, I was thinking that was for my city camp.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll be there.
Good.
Thank you.
I'm open, it's two.
Oh, open, sorry.
Okay, I'll open.
What day are we on now?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-five. I'm open.
Okay, we'll go to twenty-fifth.
I have a Minnesota Housing Partnership Meeting, regular monthly meeting in New Ulm here.
Open.
Three, three PM.
Open.
Three forty-five Enterprise North in Modalia.
I've got an MTRAC meeting, but I'm going to be gone that day, that's in Mankato at one o'clock. It's MTRAC Joe Powers Board. At the Blue Earth County Government Center, so somebody else can make that. I missed the last meeting, so.
I'm open, I've got nothing, I'm open that day if you want to pay the mileage from one end of the county across.
It's going to be much different from mine, yes, so, yeah.
Okay.
I've got the info here.
Already, if you got, I won't take that long, man.
Karen might be, I don't know if Karen might be going to that.
Okay.
So, I don't know, maybe if you want to contact her and see if she's going.
Okay.
Okay. Anything, okay, so you're going, Dennis, anything else for you on the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth, and I was looking, time was what again?
One o'clock.
Well, here's, okay, thank you. Alrighty, yep, I'll do that.
Okay. We move to twenty-six.
They have a board meeting, otherwise I'm open.
Board meeting, license building meeting directly following, and then at one-thirty PAC meeting.
Board. Same as Kishir Berg.
They got a board.
And the twenty-seventh.
Open.
Open.
One-thirty License Bureau, Heartland Express.
Open.
Twentieth.
Open.
Open.
Eight fifteen Community Health Board Executive Committee.
I've got the same.
Open.
That's at eight-thirty?
Yeah, eight-fifteen.
And the twenty-ninth.
Open.
Check at single.
Open.
So, take us to second.
I have two things, eight AM I have an MRCI Subcommittee, local MRCI New Ulm meeting in New Ulm. And then I have at four o'clock, I have a Brown County Evaluation Center meeting, it's our annual meeting, and that's at Carol's Corner. Again, that's four PM. That's all I have.
Open.
Seven o'clock Work Meeting, Terminal Park. Will you be going to that?
Yeah, we can certainly carpool.
Carpool.
By the way, if you want, I could cover that one out there at School for the Me.
Oh, that's fine, yep, yep, go ahead.
I'm on, it's right across, that's less than ten miles from me, so. That was on.
The second.
Second, and what time was that from?
Seven o'clock.
Okay.
I don't have anything, Highway twenty-nine roundabout starts that day.
Highway twenty-nine roundabout starts at ten?
So, you've got to find different ways.
Yeah, I want to go a long way, unless it rains, I suppose.
Just don't be thinking about moving to County City, okay?
Moving like Evan. The Dotson would be a long trip for him.
I was just referencing Dotson. Okay, so the second, do you have anything, Mr. Potter?
It just, the, no, nothing. What, I was going to go to the Trail Park.
And the third puts us two weeks out.
Got to get on my calendar.
And it's open, there's a meeting on the third.
Right. Just on the tenth is the next, is the official meeting. Okay, there's nothing else, we'll call a meeting adjourned.